To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, to the people, to liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Yes, we haven't received them.
Oh, that did belong to me?
That's not your.
We're not going to start the presentation yet. Oh, you want to do that first? I mean, I got no problem.
No, no, I can do either way, I just wanted to sit up.
How long is your presentation going to be?
So if you want to do the public overlook first with the...
No, no, we're not going to do that first, then we don't have everybody here.
Yeah, do your other things, Westley can help us. That would be great, if we do it a little bit later.
All right. Just a quick discussion about, for the planning board members, more specifically than anybody else. We've been talking about having weekly meetings. I've been meeting with Silo quite often and with our consultants on and off and we're looking at this point trying to pull together weekly meetings to discuss the status of particular parts of the project, whether they be bonding, design guidelines, plat submissions, whatever the key points still required to be submitted are or need refinement. And the intent is to identify where we're at with each one of those processes each week and find and determine what needs to be done for the next step in the process and to set up some kind of a timeframe, some timeline for when that part of the process will be completed so that we keep pushing the project along as quickly as possible. As always, anybody from the board is invited to attend as long as we have no more than three board members there. So the meetings right now, we're planning on, on planning board nights, we're going to hold the meetings at 5:30 and they're going to be up at Silo, face-to-face meetings. Sometimes it helps to have a face-to-face meeting versus conference calls and then when, from those meetings, we'll come straight down here, obviously for the planning board meeting, that's what we did tonight. On the alternate weeks, or through the fifth week, you know, the special week, we'll be doing those at 2 o'clock on Wednesday afternoons. And they'll be either face-to-face at Silo again or via conference call if anybody wants to do it via phone call, so it can be handled either way. So we're going to be starting, we started those this week actually and we'll be continuing with those next week, all right?
So every Wednesday at 5:00 at Silo?
5:30.
At 5:30?
On planning board meeting nights.
Okay.
Only 5:30. The other weeks is going to be at 2:00 at Silo.
Is the press allowed to go to those meetings?
No. No, these aren't, no, they're not open meetings.
Okay, so they're separate from the regular public planning board meeting?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so every other...
2:00?
2:00 on the Wednesdays when we don't have planning board meetings, 5:30 on those days when we do. Now, a couple other issues that we discussed tonight that we may get into more later on. We're looking at design guidelines. The consultants had submitted design guideline proposals. Silo has reviewed them, they've come up with some changes they would like to see made and some arguments for why those changes are being requested. They're going back to the consultants, they're going to try to get those reviewed and their comments back on proposed changes by next Friday. That's where we stand with those. The other issue we discussed tonight was bonding. It appears that there's an agreement at least in principle as to what needs to be bonding, how the bonding could be packaged. As far as, you know, Silo is basically going to write that up for us now, they're going to talk about the phasing of the bonding, how that would work, they're going to talk about what will be bonded and also the amounts of the bonding and what types of bonding, whether it be a lot of bonding itself or performance bond or whatever, the difference for cash bonds or whatever, however they might want to bond the deposits are going to differ. So we should be receiving that in a week or so. And at that point, I think I pretty much covered what we went through tonight. Dave, Julie, anybody have any comments on...
Do you want to talk about the documents? Who's going to get what at this point?
Yeah, we might as well go over that, yeah. Silo is going to be submitting their full submittal here next week. So the question for the board members, the answer is, what do you want, or how do you want that submittal done for yourself? We're talking a massive amount of paperwork, we're talking 160 documents, some documents are 500, 700 pages, whatever, it's a huge submittal. So personally, what I'm going to ask, I'm asking for is to have it done through either electronic submittal or flash drive or whatever. And if I need hard copies of whatever, I can certainly go back to Silo and ask, does everybody else want to have it done that way or do you want, if you want hard copies, we can load your truck up and they'll get them to you, I guess.
Maybe one hard copy in the planning office?
Well, we're going to have it at the town hall to receive me a copy too.
Well, no, I sent that email out, it was Tony who wanted the digital, Nathan wanted a digital copy.
Yeah, this is the whole, I mean, this is such a large, I don't know if they're going to want that with this.
I changed mine.
And he did not change his mind, he doesn't want 700.
Yeah.
No, you're talking a massive amount of paperwork.
But then a hard copy at the...
If you're here, the library will have a copy also.
Yeah.
The usual submittal process for, as far as town level goes. I'm just talking about for members of the planning board, how you want to hear, so. Does everybody want it electronically, are you okay with that or...
Yeah.
And if you want to ask for anything in hard copy, you can.
Will, you're okay with digital copy?
Sure.
Pedro, or want, anybody want to talk about the design guidelines at all or you want to...
I think...
Or you're saving that for your presentation?
Is it on?
Tell me.
Okay, my name's Pedro Zoriz.
First of all, you don't turn it on yet.
Oh, okay. The, the, let me address the design guidelines after we go through the presentations.
Okay. How long is your presentation?
It should be quick, but, you know, I know some of the planning board members have already seen some of the changes we've proposed to the plan, some others have not, so we just wanted to walk everyone through what the, what our submission is going to be, some of the changes we have made to the plan due to public comments and, you know, and I think we've addressed pretty much everything that we've been asked, so.
All right, well, if not something you want to start now, then have to end at 7:30 and restart.
Can we turn off the overhead lights?
We're not going to do it yet, just hold on, we'll get to that. All right, so, I mean, you don't want to start it now, then have to break off at 7:30 and start back up later, right?
Oh, it doesn't matter to me.
Well, you can go ahead. Then we'll just, we'll just do our...
You're going to stay throughout the open?
...after the...
All right, that's fine, good, that works.
Okay. It is not going to be that long, but I'll try to make it as quick as possible. So as we mentioned before, we've taken a considerable amount of time to review all of the documents, all of the consultant's memos, as well as public comments. As part of our submittal, we are addressing public comments in writing, consultant comments in writing, as well as, you know, all the changes based on those that are going to be going into our plans. The purpose of this presentation is to show you kind of the major changes that we made within the plan as part of the, as part of the comment period process. How do we change one?
It's running on on the side.
Oh. It's not working. Do you want to... So you can go to the next one. So I think, I think the, you know, there were several aspects of the project that we took into consideration and I'm going to start on this plan from the right side of the plan going left. So, you know, one of the things we're going to be discussing a little bit later is going to be the dedication of the Artisan Park overlook to the Town of Armenia. Several of the comments regarding the park was, they wanted us to relocate some of the water infrastructure, so it would be easier to donate it back again to the town and cleaner. So as part of that, we're moving the, all of the water, the water tank and the water infrastructure on the other side of 44, essentially on the southern side. The tank will be buried, so you won't be able to see it. The proposal that we have right now in terms of dedication of the Artisan Park included a donation of approximately 1.4 acres. The plans are very simple right now. That was mainly due to a lot of the comments we received from town consultants. Essentially includes a gravel driveway with 10 parking spaces. The idea is we would be donating it to the town and then have a access, access agreement in which we would do the regular maintenance of the park and the town would be in charge of operations. The, the other thing that we did was, in our, in several meetings ago, we discussed working with the town and DOT to clear a lot of the growth that has happened over the years on 44. So our plans include the demo of a lot of those trees that will help open the view, especially from the newer Artisan Park, and also includes the additional landscaping associated with, around some of the buildings. So there's an additional landscaping requirement next to this, next to these buildings here per George James' suggestion. We have now put a berm as well as landscaping down by the wastewater treatment plant, which we'll talk about in a little bit, as well as there's different landscaping requirements for each individual lot. Another thing that we've done, there was a lot of comments with regards to the state homes, so we fully designed those and those are going to be part of phase one now. And I'll talk a little bit about the design standards we've created for those and as well as the south lawn. So essentially, pretty much the whole project, other than the vineyard cottages and the restaurant up on the hill, everything's going to be part of phase one. So it's going to be fully designed and everything's included in there. One of the big questions everybody had was, there was a lot of, a lot of questions regarding how the hammerheads are going to be working, that they're not part of the Conservation Eastman, so we've addressed those. All the hammerheads now are also being proposed to be pervious surfaces. We've also met with the fire department to include areas where they wanted to see pull-offs and all that is included in the, in the submission. So, one of the, is this working now? Okay. So I spoke a little bit about this before, removing the trees by Delaware Hill up here. This would be the dedication of the park right up here. This would be the infrastructure associated with the, with the winery restaurant. One of the major items that were changed is, we were requested to move the, or try to relocate the wastewater treatment plant. We've been able to relocate the wastewater treatment plant to the southern portion of the property. We've already spoken to D E C and they're in agreement of having the wastewater treatment plant down there as suggestions per both Dr. Clemens and George James. We provided a landscaping on a berm along Route 22 to ensure that vehicular traffic wouldn't be able to see inside the maintenance facility. Maintenance facility is also being reconfigured to make sure it complies with the standards of the Natural Resource Management Plan for, per Audubon International. And we've rearranged parking, an extra parking, all the extra parking is proposed right now to be done as green pavers. Design homes, the state homes for, has been one of the areas where we've worked the most. And part of it was, you know, trying to minimize steep slope disturbance and most importantly, clearing along those areas. The idea is to ensure that a lot of the natural vegetation that is there is going to stay there and also provide screening moving forward. So one of the things we did, I don't know if you can see it here, there's a lot of light, but essentially, we ended up creating along all the state homes what we called ADAs, so available, allowable disturbance area, i.e. building envelope. So we're, we're going to tell every customer, that's the only area where you can disturb in these plans. So what we were able to accomplish with that is by combination of changing the road profiles, we've been able now to bring the road profiles to comply with the requests of the fire department too. We've added a series of areas where we've had retaining walls in order to minimize upslope or at least downslope on these houses, you know, maximize the preservation of the lower trees, the same in this one. Road E, we've reconfigured, so now is at a lower elevation, so it minimizes clearing on the, on the houses below. We've provided, like I said before, the ADA. Additionally, we bumped the landscaping standards of each lot, so every lot is going to have to provide at least one tree for every thousand square feet of footprint. We've provided a, in order to incentivize homeowners not to do further clearing, for every tree they save, they will be able not to plant another tree. So the idea is, you know, if you can keep a, you know, a big tree in there, there's no reason why you have to plant an additional tree. Each home, each lot is going to have to do a green infrastructure practice within the design guidelines and it includes, we've chosen four that we've looked at every lot that we know that they're going to work and they're going to provide water quality value. Essentially, the lots are going to have to do either green roof, a water cistern, a pervious surfaces, or what's the, what's the next one? And planters. Yeah. So the idea is, not only are we taking care of the whole stormwater management plan for the whole project as a whole within the golf course and complying with ESOPUTS and standards as well as the, as well as the general permit per D E C, but additionally, we're requesting each one of these homeowners to do that. We've bolstered the design standards for all the houses, so it would be very clear for the building inspector to understand, okay, you know, do these houses comply with the design standards set forth in the MDP? So we've tried to articulate that as much as possible. This is an example of one lot. This lot, as you can see, requires five shaded trees based on the footprint of that house. This would be the ADA area. Based on the grading plan that we did for this lot, this would be roughly the clearing associated with that lot. We have what we call the transitional area, which is the area outside of the ADA that is owned by the homeowner. We're also requiring that the lots that are but the Conservation Eastman are going to have signs so that the homeowners understand where they have to stay within the property. And then some of these items here, talk a little bit about the, yeah, some of the mitigation measures. One of the ones that I didn't speak on landscaping is, 30% of the remaining plantable areas are going to be, have to be planted with shrubs and herbaceous plants material. So with all those changes we've made, this is a little bit comparison, just a little cheat sheet between what was approved in 2009, our plan from August, and where we're at today. So our total amount of units stayed the same. Total disturbance went up, but it went up on slopes of less than 15%. Steep slope disturbance went down significantly. So now we're up to 110, originally 136, we're up to 110 right now. Total slopes of 15 to 30% went from 102 acres to down to 90 acres. There's a significant reduction in naturally forested areas as well as previously altered, stayed similar. And then the, one of the biggest changes have been from disturbance of steep slopes who went from 35 acres to 20 acres. I'm going to note that these numbers that are in here include the maximum allowable disturbance that would happen. Essentially, we're taking every ADA and saying if someone was to disturb the whole ADA, this is what we would get. Our current plan, based on regular assumptions, is substantially less than that. So, you know, one of the things, the other, another thing is, you know, we're still meeting the same amount of, of water buffers from the August 2014 plan, which was an increase from the approved plan. And one of the big changes have been from a visual aspect standpoint of view, we've reduced the amount of units that are within the SPO. We have no high waivers anymore. And we've actually reduced drastically the amount of units that are visible for viewpoint one and viewpoint two, which is the Delaware Hill. We've gone from, I think roughly 438 houses that were seen in the previous plan down to less than 50. So that's been a substantial change. And that's without any of the mitigation measures we're talking. So I think it's, the plan's going to be substantially better than the previous plan in those regards. You know, this is a nice little chart that was prepared the other day that we thought we would bring here, so that some of the members of the public that might, might have not seen this before. But we're setting, we're still setting aside 80% of the land on open space. We've reduced the water demand by 33%. We're decreasing the density by 65%. We're reducing building heights from 17 to zero. Of course, we're reducing by 40% the wastewater generation and we're increasing the local and natural wetlands and water quality buffers by 40% from existing conditions. I think we spoke a little bit about this already, the type of documents we're going to be submitting, but I'll walk you through them. Essentially, we're going to include the addendum to the E A F. We're going to include the addendum to the E A F, which in that document is going to include a lot of the backup for the environmental associated items. So the, that's going to include anywhere between analysis of steep slopes, to addressing all the impacts, to T and D compliance and so forth. We have the updated master development plan. We'll have a full site plan set for phase one, a full subdivision plat that, you know, we've gotten a lot of comments from the consultants, so we'll incorporate a lot of those in there. Have we received the notes?
No, not yet.
We need those.
Yeah, I had that pulled out of the...
Okay.
Trying to get them.
Perfect. Yeah, we really need those in order to submit. We're responding, responding to all the comments, public comments separately and then we're responding to the town consultants' comments, each one. Are we doing one memo for all of them or...
Separate memos.
Separate memos for each one. And then we're going to be including all of the project coordination between New York State DOT, New York State D E C, Department of Health, Army Corps and SHPO. So in summary, that's, that's pretty much it. I don't know if any of the planning board members have any questions.
So the wastewater treatment plant then is basically the same plant that was relocated?
Correct. Yeah, we moved it all the way down, but it's the same plant.
So the plants for like the plant design and the holding tanks and so forth, they're basically just...
Same. You know, they're going to be slightly different just because you got a, it's in a different location, but, but pretty much the same.
Okay.
We're treating it to the same standards, we're treating it to drinkable water of all standards, so it's pretty much the same.
And the holding tank up on, I guess near the driving range it is now, how many gallons is that going to be?
Water tank?
Yeah, the water tank, 240?
240, 240,000 gallons. Yeah, that, that's for essentially fire prevention system and also to ensure that we have enough pressure on all the, on all the houses.
It's all underground?
All underground, yeah. It'll be, it's three sides, but the side that is exposed is exposed towards the woods. But from, from Delaware Hill, you won't see it, it will be buried underneath.
And there's going to be an access road to the backside of it, the blind side?
We'll use essentially, it won't be a gra, a paved access road, it's just a grass, it's essentially the same path that we use for the maintenance vehicles on the, on the golf course.
Anybody else have any questions or... Oh.
Are you taking questions from the audience?
Sure enough.
Okay, so I just one classification about the estate homes.
Tanya, Tanya, you're going to have to go up to the...
Oh, okay, sure, no problem.
Or do they have the other mic?
It's very simple.
Hold on, hold on just a second, Tanya.
Tanya, you can sit.
Portable mic.
She'll give you the mic.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to ask a question. Regarding the slope of the estate homes, I wrote down, but I'm not sure I understand it correctly, that you are going to be reducing the, it said you have 20, let me just write, see what you said, but I want to make sure I'm using it. Okay.
If I have a slide.
Steep slope disturbance, 20 acres, and you're reducing it from 30% to 20% steep slopes for the highest ones?
No, no, so...
Okay, that I want to understand better.
Yeah, those are, those are number of acres.
Uh-huh.
So, by the way, and those are number of acres and that's not the state homes, that's the overall site.
Okay, so for the estate homes, are some of them being reduced in slope?
Substantially. So right now, the number for, so on the 2009 plan, we were disturbing total of 30, total of 35 acres ranging from 15 to 30%, I'm sorry, from 30% and higher. That number was brought down on the grading plan for August down to 22. That only included what was graded, not the whole overall lot. And part of the concern of the, both the planning board as well as the town consultants is, how do we prevent someone to go and just clear the whole lot or how do we understand where the, their house is going to be? So one of the things we did is we went lot by lot and figured where would be the best location for the house to be that was ultimately going to minimize impacts, where the driveways are going to be located, so we have driveway envelopes for those and with the goal to minimize the steep slope disturbance as much as possible. So this plan here showing a worst case scenario where we would disturb 100% of all the ADAs, the allowable disturbance area, we are 40%, we've reduced the steep slopes by 40% from the approved 2009 plan.
So that means that you would be able to meet the recommended 20% steep slopes of the Dutchess County and the DLC?
So Duchess, we have a response for Duchess County, how we comply with our zoning and we are disturbing slopes higher than 20%.
Okay.
We are providing...
How much higher?
Thirty, higher than 30%. You see them in here, that's what it is.
Oh, I see, okay.
Correct. So however...
But there's only eight of those houses, right? They're over 30%.
Again, when we look at 30%, we're looking at everything in the plan, we're not looking at specific house. Because you might have a house that have a little piece of 30%, you might have a house that has a lot and have a house that has less. So we look at total disturbance across the plan. However, one of the things that we looked at in terms of how we comply with steep slope disturbance is ultimately, how do we mitigate that and, and provide also, how do we mitigate this, this disturbance? So one of the things that we've, we've asked is for each individual, each individual applicant to provide additional screening measures and additional erosion control measures. Because we're cognizant that, yes, we are disturbing, even though we're reducing, we still disturb in some steep slopes. So each, each homeowner, when they come in for an application for building permit, and that's why we were talking about the design guidelines, they're going to have to include an erosion control management plan that shows how they comply with our plan. They're going to have to include the erosion control measures that they're doing and a plan of how they're going to maintain it. They're going to have to include the plan to comply with all the landscaping standards as well as the architectural standards, as well as the lighting standards. And if any of these units were to disturb or propose disturbance outside the ADA, essentially, they would have to come back to the planning board and go back to full, full site plan approval.
And keep in mind too, these have not all been agreed upon yet, design standards are talking about it. I think it's going in a pretty good direction, but, you know, it's not completely...
Correct.
Sharon, have a question?
Thank you very much.
You mentioned briefly, I heard...
Sharon, can you just state your name for the...
Sharon Quover.
Is it working?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
I thought you mentioned wetlands at the end, they're increasing possibly the flow of water to wetlands. I wasn't quite clear what you said.
No, no, no. We, we are, we are designing our, our stormwater management system to be able to withstand the full build-out of the whole project. So even though most of the houses will not build the full impervious surfaces, you know, that are allowed under the bulk standards, we've, we've been required as a mitigation measure for that to design our stormwater management system to comply with that.
Water quality buffers?
Water buffers?
Buffers.
Oh, that's from the existing conditions. We've increased them.
You're providing more buffers to build the, to the wetlands?
Prior to the stream?
Correct, yeah. So right now, 99% of our natural water bodies will have a water, water quality buffer and 68% of the newly built... buffer, and sixty-eight percent of the newly built stream, you know, ponds within the golf course will have water quality buffers.
Fifty feet or a hundred feet?
There's a minimum of thirty feet.
Up to a hundred?
Up to a hundred, yes. Some of them are a hundred, some of them are more than a hundred.
Ricky, you have a question?
Who is going to enforce the building envelope disturbance area? And did you consider? Say hello to.
I'm Vicki Doyle, town board member. I wondered who was going to enforce the building envelope disturbance area, because I'm sure over time it would be hard to enforce that. Is that our building inspector or is that the land conservancy that you decide to?
It is, it is two things. One is, first of all, all of the standards that we're putting here are going to be enforceable by the town. The town will have the ability to come in and enforce any of these standards. But over time, we have two things. One is the HOA documents, the homeowners association require those things, so there's pretty stringent, you know, like the town or the homeowners association can put a lien on that property, make sure they enforce it. Additionally, the conservation easement organization is going to be overseeing as well that there's no encroachment on the conservation easement as well.
And then my other question was, you're saying you need ninety, or seventy percent is going to be planted with shrubs and herbaceous plants. Are those native?
Yes.
Plants? Okay.
Pedro, you talked about, are you going to hand out the, your proposed design guidelines to the board tonight?
Yeah, so I think, just to give a little clarification for the board, we've been going back and forth with the town consultants to understand what the design guidelines should be. I think in general, we have a pretty, you know, we agree in most of the items that should be included in there, including the ability to approve what our mitigation measures are and what the requirements are under approval process. Where we defer in opinion is the, we believe that the design guideline should be very black and white, so there's no room for interpretation and there's no room for discretionary approvals moving forward. And that's part of the reason why we're taking an approach of, even though we're, our current plan is disturbing a lot less than is shown in there, we're taking our position that even under the worst-case scenario, even under disturbing all of these areas, we're still minimizing the disturbance of steep slopes, we're still minimizing clearing to natural forested areas, we're still protecting and taking into consideration as a whole the plan itself. And however, we are requiring the same information that the consultants were requesting, we're requiring, you know, that the town engineer reviews it, that there is an erosion control management plan in there, that that erosion control management plan complies with our permit on our SWIP, that the mitigation measures requested by the planning board are included in those plans, that there is no grading proposed outside the ADA, that the design standards for the house are in compliance, that the driveway standards are in compliance, et cetera. So we, you know, we want to make sure that moving forward, you know, a new building inspector or a new town engineer or whoever might be the case can look at those design standards and say, yes, do you comply or not? And if the applicant can't comply with it, then the applicant should be, should have to come back to the planning board and do full site plan approval for that area. But we, you know, we're, you know, I think the current design standards as they were currently submitted to us would require every single homeowner to have a full site plan approval back again. And that's where I think the main difference is.
On each lot?
On each lot.
I understand. We talked earlier, it wasn't, as long as it stays in that ADA, it wasn't a full site plan approval, correct?
No, it's not, no.
So maybe.
But there's a difference of opinion.
There's a difference of opinion between us and the consultants right now.
Consultants have presented it one way, and Silo is countering with, that almost requires a full submission. What we need to do is, each board member needs to take the original submitted by the consultants for the design guidelines, read through that, then read the ones you got tonight, or you're getting tonight from Silo, as to what the rebuttal is and what they're proposing to do. And after the consultants review them again next week and we get their feedback on that, we may end up having to make some decisions on which way we're going to go with it. So people need to read that, get, you know, educated to what's being discussed, and we may have to make some calls on that. Or it may get worked out before that point.
So in two thousand nine, that MDP, basically you were allowed to disturb thirty-four and a half acres of slopes?
Without any of the mitigation measures we're putting now.
Without the mitigation. But now you'll be resubmitting, I guess next week or whatever.
Correct.
The complete set of documents. So how does, I guess it's a question for you, Dave, how does the two thousand nine decision in allowing that, that number of acres of thirty-four and a half of slopes, thirty percent and greater, how does that affect now this new submission? And our ability to have design guidelines or whatever, you know, for these estate homes or whatever the areas that are being proposed up on the steeper slopes?
Well, the applicant is using the two thousand nine approval as a benchmark, as something that you've already found to be acceptable and approved. But the reality is, is that it's a very new project, things are changing, a lot of changes being made. So that's one of the things that, you know, Silo has presented that's new to us, we heard it just tonight, about the comparison to the two thousand nine approvals. So that's something that we have to go back and evaluate and take a look at, and, you know, we'll provide our input to you folks, you know, hopefully next week on that issue.
And then, and I think part of what's happened is, over the years, we've forgotten what, why the reason why we found the areas where we're developing today. And there was a substantial amount of work and a substantial amount of studies that were done during the two thousand nine approvals, which dictated, okay, what are the natural water bodies that we want to protect? What are the man-made bodies? Where are the sensitive habitats? What are we protecting? And then, so as a whole, when we looked at the whole plan, we figure out, okay, we have a golf course in the middle, that golf course currently has no buffers. Now we got to create buffers for water quality buffers. The golf course gets wider. As it gets, as it gets wider, then it starts pushing you up the slope or it starts pushing you down towards the wetlands. So it is a give and take as we go through all of this. You know, we got to take into consideration the SPO, we got to take into consideration the AQO, and it's the, looking at the whole balance of the project and trying to find something that is environmentally sensitive, that provides, that provides the tax revenues and jobs that we want and that complies with the zoning. And that's what was done originally in the past. I think unfortunately, on our new project, we said, okay, we got to comply with everything that, all the environmental benchmarks that were done in the past, but more, because now we're reviewing it again. And I think that's where we've gotten caught in a lot of these debates. And we are cognizant of some of the concerns that the community might have, and there's a reason why we've gone above and beyond what is required either by zoning or by law with, you know, erosion control management plan and sort of the mitigation measures. And we're not asking the planning board to say, hey, anybody can go build anything up there, because we wouldn't want it either. What we're asking is that the, a new applicant will have to provide engineering drawings and enough information so both that the building inspector, as well as the town engineer can make an educated decision of, yes, it complies with the approvals of the project and we're not having any future new adverse environmental impact. And if they, if they're looking to make a change to that, then they should come back and discuss it with the planning board and have to do site plan approval for those lots.
Just so the board is aware, the legal standards that the towns consultants are taking a look at and comparing the project to are several. One is there's a section, the town's steep slope ordinance, that says for any disturbance, you know, over fifteen percent steep slopes, the clearing has to be minimized. So we're trying to evaluate the applicant's proposal to see whether or not it actually meets that particular standard. Town's law allows for development on steep slopes, so fifty percent and greater and thirty percent greater, you know, provided that you meet certain conditions. So we're going through just making sure that those conditions are in fact satisfied. The SECA regulations require, you know, environmental impacts to be mitigated to the maximum extent that they possibly can. So, you know, the town's code protects steep slopes, they're important environmental resources for the town, and we want to make sure that the applicant's proposal meets that standard of sort of minimizing and mitigating to the maximum extent practical. So our hope is, is that the applicant's newest proposal, you know, achieves all those objectives, and so we're going to take a look at that. There's also a requirement in the code and the, I think it's in the RDO, that says, you know, for all homes over five thousand square feet, they have to go through a minor site plan review or the equivalent of that as part of the MDP review process being done by the board. So our hope is, and this is again, one of the things that we're trying to achieve, is that these design standards or guidelines are going to basically account for the equivalent of a minor site plan review and achieve that objective that's in your code. So all of these estate homes won't have to come back to the planning board, you know, for an individual site plan review. But, you know, to do that, we want to make sure that all the requirements that are in the code are, you know, covered. So that's basically what our focus is and has been for all the reviews that we've done with respect to these guidelines.
Again, the best thing is, you know, really take those, take the proposal from the consultants that we received, they're seven pages basically, five to seven, and read those, compare to what Silo has to go back with.
The only thing I would request is, unfortunately, the design guidelines that the town consultants prepared refer back to the zoning code. So unless you put the zoning code information in there, it's hard, it seems pretty easy, but when you put the zoning code in there is when you start.
Overlap.
Overlapping, you know, one thing refers to another, refers to another, suddenly you're in full site plan approval, full visual analysis for each individual lot, full erosion control practices for each individual lot. And I think that's where, you know, we're providing the same information essentially that the town consultants are requesting, it's just we're essentially requesting for just not have discretionary or another review process, but actually meet the standards of what are written in the approval process.
At the end, a lot of the paragraphs from the consultant, somebody that you're on a CNO, saying, refer to zoning law or whatever, I would just say, you know, as much as possible, disregard those, I mean, that's, read what the consultant wrote relating to the guideline and leave that part of it out for now, we can always get into that part of it later on if that may be. Just make it easier for yourself to compare to the, what Silo submitted.
Hey Pedro, are the comparison graphs and this information, is this all going to be part of your submission next week?
Yeah, there's actually, we, one of the things that we're going to be submitting is, we are given a argument of why we comply with section one twenty-one dash thirty-six, which is steep slopes, how we comply with section one twenty-one fourteen point one, which is the SPO. So we're going through all of those sections of the zoning law and providing responses of compliance to it. Again, if you look at the section SPO, we're supposed to look at the overall plan, and that's why I keep on going back, we're always trying to focus on one specific side of the project and not look at the overall, the overall project itself.
What are the comparison charts and stuff that you're showing here?
All those will have it, yeah.
They can actually be in the submission that you sent to us?
Correct, it's going to be as part of the EAF table.
Okay, good, thanks.
All those will be in there.
Sorry, one more thing about the wastewater plant. Before you were going to have discharged the water into the Lebatuck Creek, but now the location wouldn't allow for that.
We actually have to pipe the whole way back.
How many miles is that?
Back?
Two and a half miles.
Nine hundred and a half millimeter.
Wow.
Where's the gulf?
Cascade Amena Brook. That's a requirement of D.C.
Really?
So do you want you to bring it right back there?
We try to create different ponds and then discharge into.
Say, maybe one of the irrigation ponds or something.
Unfortunately, two things. One, D.C. does not allow to discharge into impoundments, which any of the ponds we have ultimately discharge into the menia and to the wetland AM fifteen, which ends up being an impoundment. So the only area where we could discharge and meet the requirement would be to a tributary to the Cascade Amena Brook. So we have to pipe the whole thing back.
Can you describe the exact location where that stream will be?
We're providing a couple of different locations for the D.C. to review, so ultimately until D.C. says where it has to be, but it's probably going to be towards the, what used to be the stream within the golf course, that's probably, you know, this stream over here. Where it used to be all hole. Let me see if I, let me see. So the hole nine before used to play this way. There was a little stream in there that discharges into the Cascade Amena Brook. We're probably going to be discharging in there and then ultimately going to the cascade. We are treating it to tertiary standards, so it will be, and that's also part of the reason why they want it there.
Well, to protect the trout stream just a little bit higher.
Yeah.
Did they put that in line?
Yeah, there are several memos that happened in two thousand nine, and part of the reason because it is a trout stream, they want that water to go there. Because it's a cleaner, much cleaner water than what's currently there.
They don't let anybody do anything to that stream.
I know.
They're careful.
I know.
And so.
But remember, we're treating normally, and I don't know the specifics, I'm not the engineer of this, but we're taking, because we were using the water back again for irrigation, we were treating it essentially to drinking standards. So as part of that, they wanted it to go there, because now our water demand is a lot lower than before, so we don't need the treatment facility to supply the water to balance the equation.
What's a creek is class A, not, is a rock trout line.
Correct.
Which is very, very rare.
Yep.
Oh, again, that's a D.C. purview thing.
Yep.
Vicki?
One more question. Were you going to do a presentation on how the golf course would be maintained according to Audubon standards? And could you, will that tell us what kind of chemicals, herbicides, pesticides that will be allowed on the course?
They're all in the NRP. There's about ten.
Yeah, there's a table which shows the pesticides, herbicides, planticides.
Pardon?
It's an entire document test, when you can frame, when you can't frame, where you have buffers, specific chemicals you spray, special management zones next to water.
And we.
And also a research panel, like also the entire theme of how you manage, in every single sense, both for the houses, chemical.
And we did have a presentation, they came, December eighteenth?
Yeah.
They came by and they gave a presentation to the board, and they were very helpful.
Okay, with that, I'd like to go ahead.
What are the two big differences between these two documents with the design, the design standards for the estate homes?
The two big difference again is discretionary. So the consultants want to still keep the ability to further impose future mitigations. What we're saying is, we've already mitigated to the maximum extent possible, and if an applicant submits the required documents and they're complying with that, they should be able to get a building permit. The other major thing is the town consultants were referring back again to the zoning, and unfortunately, the town of Amena zoning law, when you look at something, it refers you to something else, refers you to something else, and by the time you end up doing the loop, as it was written, and I don't think that was the approach, but as it was written, it would require completely full site plan approval. So essentially, we would have non-buildable lots.
And Dave, is there a way to, like, expedite this whole process in terms of when they do draw a building permit?
Keep in mind, we haven't seen or studied the applicant's proposal, because we got it handed to it just tonight, and other than reading the top line, we haven't really had a chance to, you know, review it at all. I think that the towns consultants, and I'm just going to summarize for the technical consultants, and they can jump in if they want to, but I think that their view was that, you know, the steep slope ordinance of the town requires, you know, the removal of vegetation to be minimized. And, you know, how do you do that without having some sort of, you know, minimum discretionary review over each of the estate homes when they come in to make sure that that clearing is actually minimized? And, you know, maybe the applicant addressed that in their latest submission, they feel that they have, we hope that they have, we'll take a look at it and let you guys know. But that's basically, you know, where the towns consultants are coming from, is to try to, you know, minimize that disturbance to the steep slopes and the vegetation on that and to comply with the town's steep slope ordinance.
Okay. Okay. At this point, I guess we can go ahead and get into the discussion about the Artisan Park. And again, for the board members and. And, uh, again, for the board members and, um, I would say also for the town board members, Larissa, me, give me up if Dave sent, didn't go to the town board members, I don't think, right?
No, dude.
It did?
Right now, I gave it to them, yeah.
Oh, you gave it to them just now, okay. Dave Everett wrote up a, um, basically a checklist of what needs to be done and how to go about getting it done for the trans, for the process of transferring, we're completing the review and then the transferring of the Artisan Park over to the, uh, the town. So, that's something everybody will want to take a look at and, uh, get familiar with, so you'll know what the process is going to be or could be.
Do you want me to go over that?
Sure, yeah, it's fine, yeah. Be great.
Okay, so, one of the things that I was hoping would sort of focus the discussion tonight is just to have a very quick overview of kind of the, the process that I see both boards, um, going through to sort of get the Artisans' Park thing taken care of. So, um, it's basically sort of, you know, six steps here, um, it's a pretty standard approach to things. The first step is really, you know, both boards, the town board and the planning board have to agree with Silo as to what the details of this park is going to be. It's a very simple park, I think you saw the, the site plan, um, there's a limited number of details that I think you really need to discuss. I think tonight's meeting, you should focus on those details so you can give some direction to Silo as to what it is that you're looking for from the, from the park. And you should probably get some input from, uh, the town engineer and from the town planner because there are some engineering issues and Julie can talk to that, that she's got some concerns with. And you may also want to consider getting some, and this may have already occurred, but some preliminary input from D O T about whether or not, you know, the, the access road, um, the location of the park close to Route 44, um, is going to be viable from their perspective. I would hate for everybody to go through a process and then D O T come in and say, is this not going to work, why didn't you guys consult us in the beginning of this? So, Silo may have done that already and, you know, they can certainly speak to those issues. So, the, the first step is to, you know, tonight, try to get some consensus on the details of this, so Silo can go back and develop a pa- a park plan, what's the park going to look like? And then after that, um, I think, um, the town board should consider maybe adopting a non-binding resolution, um, you know, consenting or approving the plan, um, just to give Silo some comfort level that this is the plan that the town feels, uh, they want, um, so they're not going to go and spin their wheels developing a whole bunch of plans that may ultimately change in the future. And then after that, um, you know, the town has got, or the planning board has got to evaluate the environmental impacts of the park. You're going to do that through your SECPRO process anyway, so there's no need for the town board to do a separate SECPRO, the planning board's already doing it, so that would be covered basically by your review. The fourth step, and we've talked, had these discussions with Silo, is that on their subdivision plat, they're going to have a formal offer of dedication of the park to the town, um, and so that'll be on, that'll be on the plat. And then the, the fifth step is basically the approval of the park plan, um, and that would be done through, uh, approval of the site plan and approval of the subdivision plat. And my recommendation is that there would be a number of conditions imposed to kind of, uh, effectuate the, the eventual transfer of this park, um, to the town. So, the first one would be, you know, the park would be dedicated to the town upon completion of the following conditions. One is that construction of the park, you know, can't begin until D O T has issued all the necessary approvals, that's pretty standard. There'd be execution, a, a, a third condition would be execution of a maintenance agreement and a deed covenant between Silo Ridge and the town. This agreement would basically require Silo and the future HOA to maintain the park at their expense and that if either of those parties fail to maintain the park, um, the agreement would allow for the town to do so and to assess the cost of that, uh, back against the property owner, presumably through the tax bill or some other, you know, way that we can, you know, have an agreement with Silo on. And then the agreement, it's also going to have to be incorporated into the HOA documents that are accepted by the attorney general's office because homeowners buying lots, um, in the new project have to be notified that these agreements exist and that they're going to be on the hook financially for the maintenance of the, of the park and whatnot. Silo's also requested the execution of an access agreement and I would suggest that that also be a deed covenant, allowing Silo Ridge access over the park property to, um, get access to their current office building and to the future, uh, winery restaurant. And another, uh, condition would be that the park elements must be constructed and accepted by the town before the town actually formally accepts dedication of the park, which is a pretty standard thing. And then the last one would be, the, the park must be constructed and dedicated to the town before the COs are issued, um, in, in the Silo Ridge project. Again, I think from having conversations with Silo, it sounded like it was their expectation and intention to build this park soon, um, as quickly as possible, um, but they can speak to whether or not, um, the thinking on that has changed. And then the last step is basically the formal dedication process. There's going to be a formal deed of dedication from Silo to the town and a variety of other legal documents, you know, and the lawyers will basically work out each of these documents, you know, it'll be the town attorney, planning board attorney and Silo's attorney will work out the legal, legalese on each one of these, um, documents and each step along the way. So, that's the general process and how it goes. So, like I said, the first stage is really for you folks tonight to sort of discuss the park, discuss the details, discuss what you want, what you, what you don't want, to give Silo some direction and get some feedback from Silo as to what they can do or what they can't do.
Well, can you throw back, back up the, um, Artisan Park slide? Could you use that one? All right, um, Vic Brody and I met the other day and we kind of came up with a listing of different, um, areas for discussion with the town board here, uh, so we can start right off and go right through the, uh, the list that was created. The first one was a maintenance agreement, um, involving things like lawn care, the parking lot, uh, maintenance, driveway maintenance, the path and benches and whatever else is involved in the park, and I think Dave just spoke to that pretty much.
Yeah, I think there was a question about the benches though, so, whether, were there going to be benches or not, or there was a problem having benches.
On, on our, on our previous plan, the one from 2014, uh, we had a, I wouldn't say fairly elaborate, but we had a landscaping plan as well as, uh, uh, some benches and so forth. Some of those items, uh, were of concern to some of the planning board consultants because of, uh, uh, because it's located on the, on the view shed and on the SPO. So, the new plan has been brought down substantially in terms of, of those, those items. Currently, as the plan sits, uh, it includes, um, a wildflower mix throughout the, uh, throughout the park, a walkway up to an area where you would be able to see, and we were planning on including two benches per discussions and suggestions, uh, over the last meeting.
Okay. One of the other things we were looking at is, um, yeah, having annual or seasonal operation and hours open to the public. So, I didn't know.
What happened?
Uh, annual or seasonal operation and hours open to the public.
I think we were going to leave that, the, essentially, our, our understanding is that the town would operate the park themselves. So, our suggestion was not to allow the parking, uh, I'm sorry, the park to be used at night nor in the winter, just because of, uh, uh, one, snow, snow removal, two, um, it becomes a lot harder to maintain the, the gravel parking lot with that, and then three, you know, I don't know if it's, if it would be, you know, if it would be recommended to have people standing there at night, but, um, that is a decision for the town to make. The, we're willing to take care of the regular maintenance, meaning, uh, maintaining the, uh, driveway, doing regular maintenance to the parking areas and, um, uh, cutting of the lawn.
Ricky, I think that when you, when you talk about seasonal or, you know, the annual operation or seasonal operation, you've also got to speak to the, um, the issue of, um, whether you're going to have paved or, uh, or forest surface, you know, gravel, whatever on parking lot, because obviously if you've got a gravel parking lot, maintaining that in the wintertime, whole different story than a paved parking lot or walkways for that matter. So, um, that's something the town board does need to think about and weigh in on. If you want to have a, if you want, if you do want to have it open during the wintertime, you want to make sure it's going to be halfway easy to, you know, easiest possible to maintain, so.
Vicki Doyle, um, I would, uh, be very interested in seeing the, uh, lot be, uh, in a pervious surface as you suggested, but rather than gravel, the pervious pavers and use this as an opportunity to tout some of the, um, through signage, um, some of the, um, environmentally friendly measures that have been, uh, that are, um, a part of your project and some of the history of the project and some, and tell visitors also about the history of this view out to, um, this particular area and that we should have reference to, um, the town of Amenia being named, uh, for this view essentially means literally beautiful to the eye. And I think this is a real opportunity for people entering Amenia to get a sense of this great historical importance and cultural, uh, importance that they're being a part of. And I would include, so I want it to be something that speaks beautifully, not just two benches and, and a gravel route out there, but something that would, um, be something that would really reflect the cultural, rich cultural history of this particular view and of the town.
What can I say, kind of tie in with the scene?
That's exactly, actually, in Borden Park, we did a beautiful little park.
Just tie in with a signage.
Showing the visitors and we see visitors regularly stopping there, having picnics, and it's gorgeous and it's self-serve, you go out there, you can, can look at the signs or not look at the signs. There are some very small hawthorn trees and I know somebody said we'll not have any trees there, but, um, plantings absolutely would be appropriate, but I think it needs to be designed, not just, and I think, I see that Marianne Johnson would be involved in that, but I think for very little money, we have excellent landscape designers in our community, we have a, a, a wealth of those people here who could, um, provide their services for free, I'm sure, to make sure that this reflects something that we are very proud of, gardening and horticultural expertise, even in a modest way, spiria and hawthorns can be done in, in a very beautiful way or they can just be thrown in and, and done. So, I would take that opportunity to put a few more resources into this 1.4 acres to make it reflective of the great history that we are providing to the people and also signage. When you talk to D O T about the appropriateness of that particular driveway, could we also talk about a brown historic sign that says scenic overlook and really encourage people to come out and learn more about this particular site? Because maybe you're, that's the first time coming down Delveren Hill and you don't know that there's a scenic overlook and I'm also not sure.
That's been discussed, yeah, that's, that's been brought up, yeah.
So, so, just, just a little background on that, uh, we did have our, our, on landscaping designers to a full landscaping design for that. It was brought with a lot of criticism, given that it's in the SPO, uh, from a, we would require waivers to understand the town, won't require waivers, uh, then they brought up who's going to maintain those plants, who's going to do this, who's going to do that, and then it created a lot of problems with it. And that's the reasoning why, the current plan, essentially, we've said, we're keeping it as simple as possible and we will wait, you know, guidance from the, from the town board.
Why not a couple of things real quick, Pedro? Number one, I mean, people keep talking about you can't put any plants there, you can't put any, no, nobody has said that. What people have talked about is removing the dead trees that are 30 foot tall, they've been blocking the view on Delveren Hill on the inside and the outside corner for a long time. You know, that used to be a completely open view shed and it's grown up over the years, that's all.
I wasn't saying that, on the 1.4 acres, that's the dedication.
But even plantings around there, whether it be a, a small tree or, or shrubs that aren't going to interfere with people driving by and, you know, they're going to be eight foot tall and block the view shed. That's not what people are talking about, people are talking about the ones that would cut off the view shed, whether you're driving or whether you're setting at the park.
No, uh, Norm, we actually have specific comments from planning, from George James.
Just because there's comments doesn't mean that that has.
No, no, I know, but I, that, I'm just giving a little background why we got to where we have, but there is a, if you look at the August 2014 plan, there is a plan that talks about, uh, what the materials associated with the drive, with the walkway, uh, plantings and so forth, uh, so, uh, we also provide signage, uh, to, to areas of the road and we're happy to work with the town board to include that. With regards to pervious surfaces, unfortunately, one of the problems I'm having with all of our partners is, we're over half a million dollars in fees with the town already. There is a substantial amount more fees that I'm, that I understand is probably going to be spent as we move forward and, uh, at some point, you got to make sure the project's viable and, um, while, yeah, I agree that some of these things are, are great, we also got to try to figure out, okay, like, I also have shareholders that I got to go by and say, okay, what are we doing here? So, we are, we agree in principle with what you're saying, I think, yeah, landscaping should be pretty, pretty feasible to do. We can look into doing some of the porous, uh, items you're talking about, but at this point, we're starting to get to a lot of constraints in terms of budgetary items, given the amount of money that's been spent already, not just in the previous application, but in, in this application right now.
Well, Pedro, we could do us, uh, actual history of that look, overlook with, with some kind of verbiage, it's not a big deal.
Yeah, no, those things would be great, those things, I agree.
Well, I'm not talking about papers, but I mean, the verbiage and the history of it, right. Well, I just want to bring that up with.
Yeah, no, I think that, that would be great, the sign would be great, I, I do agree that more landscaping were, rather than the current plan is showing, I think that that would be good. And we can figure out a way to maintain it, uh, we, we want it to look good, cause we, if we have the, the winery restaurant there, it's going to be right in front of it, so we're going to make sure that it looks good going forward. But, you know, nowadays, if, to meet the requirements of New York State D E C for porous pavement is, is pretty extensive. It requires almost three feet of, uh, pervious surfaces underneath, it's not just putting a, a field pavers.
The, the opportunity to educate the public at this moment and to, um, to tout the environmental, uh, properties of your, uh, new community, the $500 million, uh, development that they're overseeing, this is an opportunity with signage to talk about how fabulous and all the environmental issues.
Those would be great.
Cause we're not going to see it that much, it's a gated community and we're not necessarily going to see it.
That's not true, we still, we'll still hold, like I've always said, we'll still hold all of our, um, uh, fundraising events that we did every year, so we did charity events, we'll probably do three or four every year, uh, whether it's the fire department or, you know, something with the school, we'll do the same program, one of the things that Discovery has is, most of their pro, most of their golf, um, trainers, they're all PGA tour, uh, folk, so we'll still do the, the golf, uh, uh, program that we used to do with the school in the past, so they will, people will come in here, this is not like we're blocking everybody away of.
Right, but this is an opportunity that I think that view is so popular that throughout the year, people can passively, when they're passing through, learn about your project.
We, we agree on that.
Yeah. So, I think it's a great opportunity for everybody.
Well, with egress, to digress with the opening that we started with this, um, are we going to chain it or are you going to close it, help people or not going to get in there at night when they don't want?
What's the problem, whether you're going to have it open year round or whether you're going to have it open at night?
Yeah.
That's the question.
Like at night?
That's right. That's what I'm saying, we have to, that's something to discuss, you guys.
I think the town board, in my sense, when we last spoke, would, was interested in having it at a dawn to dusk and after dark, it's not available and that we weren't, weren't that interested in having it open in, in the winter, given the reality of, of, uh, the liability in that particular.
The wintertime can be the most beautiful time.
It can be, yeah.
To take in that view.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, to, to always have it open and accessible, I think we also need to look at how it does fit into the plans for the winery, um, and, you know, make it feel integrated, if, if you're going to have, you know, plantings and, um, and such around the winery that maybe you would also incorporate something similar on the path to the park or whatever, um, maybe even recess, since there is, I know, I think Julie pointed out that there's, um, the grade starts to slope down quite a bit in that section, maybe the benches would actually be on like a lower terrace or something with nice plantings around them, so it's sort of protected from the road behind.
Or you want to keep it accessible too, if you keep that in mind.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. But, yeah, I think that was the other thing too, is, that occurred to me, um, is people stopping at the park may want to use the bathroom at the restaurant, so I don't know if there would maybe.
The rest, the restaurant's a hundred percent public.
Right, but I don't know if you would want that, you know, or if you would want to provide some sort of, um, facility near the restaurant that people would have a, a restroom.
You get, it gets very, that, that would get very complicated, cause then you're talking electrical, you're talking water, you're talking sewer, then it's, that's a whole.
So, come on into the restaurant.
But, yeah, so that's just something.
Or get in your car and drive downtown to the town hall.
And then as Julie also pointed out, you know, the, uh, possibility for the D O T wanting to expand the width of the road with a passing lane or something there in the future and how that would pretty much eat up, um, the majority of that strip of land that would be dedicated to the town.
Think, think about that, I thought about that some more, I mean, D O T is not going to put a third lane going up that hill.
And they, they.
That'd be insane, they can't put a double lane on the outside going down, cause I can't imagine people passing somebody on that downhill.
But there's two on the way up and.
Yeah, but I, I thought only.
They're not going to put, they're not going to put three. They're not going to put three lanes.
I'm not expecting that they're going to put three lanes. I'm thinking more if they want to do drainage improvements, widen the shoulder, or where there's the two lanes that come up the hill.
They can only do it within their easement though.
Sorry?
They can only do it within their easement.
True, but they can also take property.
How likely is that?
It's not very likely, but it's also quite a steep slope from where 44 is to where it drops off. So, what we've gotten so far, you know, is nice, but they need to work out some more of the details on how the grading will work. Are they going to need a retaining wall?
No, but all, there's no retaining walls needed.
Right.
And all of the, all of the engineering, it will be done and the new plan will submit. The, part of the reason why it's there is actually, it is below the road. And part of the, part of the goal is when you're driving, you're not seeing people standing there.
Right, but in terms of not undermining 44?
What do you mean undermining 44?
You cut too close to it and then the road falls off.
Amanda de Chazade from VHB. All our conversations with DOT thus far, there are no implications of going back to the original MDP entrance, which is what that is. That's the original MDP entrance. The only concern they had regarding the whole lane width on 44 really has to do with their existing conditions of drainage. And we are providing alternatives for them. We are in discussions with them. We do not foresee cutting into the slope to provide extra width. It just, it's not sensible. And it's an existing condition.
That's just as long as it's being taken into consideration and discussed with DOT.
Yes, we are.
Before the town agrees to this, DOT says, no.
The consultants are getting our memo, so is DOT.
The other part that I, you know, in mind what Nathan was talking about that I thought about also is, when you talk about wintertime use, it can be one of the most beautiful times of the year. So, I think you're going to get people pulling out there. They do now. I have driven by there in the last few days and there's always somebody pulled over there. But the other part is, I mean, you look at a lot of, I don't know, postcards, Norman Rockwell paintings, whatever. You've got people sitting at the overlook at nighttime, looking at the night sky, the moon and the town lights. So, why wouldn't, to me, that's one of the more desired uses probably. And the other part of that, just keep in mind, the town board standpoint, that's the last place in the world you're going to have vandalism. It's right in the middle of a corner, wide open, the people drive by constantly, including the police and the substation right down below it. Who in their right mind is going to go up there of all places and try to do something silly as far as kids go?
That's, those are all very good points and I do agree now that we should reconsider that a wintertime use, but that would also argue for, rather than gravel, the pervious pavers, at least where you, because otherwise they're just going to snowplow that and the gravel is going to have to all get moved back into place. But, and I also think that's an interesting thought that we leave it open even at night. But I think as a board, we'll have to talk about that, right? Because that, we have been doing traditionally, our parks have been dawn to dusk and we found that minimizes the nonsense that's going on after hours.
Well, again, you've got parks that are fairly concealed too.
Right, 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 so it's different.
You might as well create a problem, I mean, if you leave it open, yes.
Right.
I don't think that's the same scenario here. It's a totally different setting. But, and again, we're just giving food for thought. It's a town board decision to make, so. You folks are ultimately going to sit down and figure this out and do what you want to do, make your call.
So, right now, Pedro, you guys have like some orange lines going out there. Does that delineate the path?
Uh, that, yes.
Okay, so that'd be the pathway, or is that the parking lot?
No, the parking, the parking lot is close to that as you can see it, but he's further back.
Okay.
That's correct.
What do you want about the orange lines?
Huh? Is the path? So, what you say is the path.
Yeah, there on the side of the road, I saw that.
So, you say it's the path.
They kind of did a visual.
That was the walkway for the overlook when you were looking at the tarps, that's when that orange, what he was talking about.
So, wait, just to clarify what you're saying, Norm. The idea is that there's some concern about people coming out when there's traffic going on 44. You're saying they already do that. Their car, that's already dangerous.
You're talking about they pull off to take a look, you mean?
Yeah, when they, when they come back onto the road.
No, I'm talking about just currently people, there is no overlook. There's no place to pull off. And you get people to pull off there.
On the side of the road.
On the side of the road anyways, yeah. Which creates really more dangerous situations.
You think that's less safe than having them come out of the parking area?
I would say so, yeah.
Because it's not easy driving up to be in control, especially if it's a winter situation or a cold, dark situation of cars coming out in front of you.
That, that whole line of sight part, I mean, that's, to me, is the DOT, I don't know.
So, you, so people know where, the driveway would be essentially where the existing driveway to our neighbors is. So, it's way out. It's almost where our driveway is. So, what happens, you would come in, you would park there and then you would walk out towards the overlook. It would, you know, we have a traffic study that's been sent to DOT. DOT is reviewing it and DOT ultimately will review all that, including line of sight.
Yeah, because where the driveway is, probably not as bad as right in the middle of the hill.
Yeah, well, that's essentially where it is.
It's near the current driveway.
It's essentially across the street from-
Carolyn McRae's.
McRae's house. It's just, it's right across the street from that.
You know, she's got to dictate to you anyway.
Yep.
Pedro, what document did you say that had the detailed plan of this area? Was that the approval?
Landscaping, you would have to go to the landscaping plan under site plan. I think it's L O, L O three?
Three point thirty-five, maybe.
Yeah, L O three point thirty-five, I think, or L O three point thirty-something. There's a blow up of that with the landscaping plan.
Okay, thank you.
One of the questions I need to get answered, I guess, you were going to talk about pavers and not pavers. Is that an option or is that not an option?
Like I said, part of the problem I'm having at the moment is, you know, between all the mitigation measures we're having to do, between the expense that we've had as of today and the delays without approvals, it's been very hard for me to keep on saying we've got to keep on doing and doing and doing. And while I do agree that landscaping and some of these things are very feasible without having to do a major expenditure, porous pavement in compliance with D E C are extremely expensive. They require over three feet of pervious material underneath on top of the pavers on top, so. And it actually, they're not as easy to maintain either. So, that's why we would be, we would be opposed of having to go through that.
Yeah. So, this might seem like a silly question, but Julie's memo earlier today, which was just provisional, said among other things that she was concerned about the slope, or that that was a concern, that there was a steep slope. Why would that be a concern?
The slope I was talking about was the slope from 44 coming down to where the parking lot is. So, the drawing that I have doesn't show proposed grading. So, just the concern that it's stabilized and, you know, nothing slides down the hill.
So, the diff, you'd just be concerned that the town owns property with a possibly dangerous slope on it is something to worry about or consider?
To consider.
Okay, but not a specific danger to cars or to people or even to buildings necessarily?
No.
So, from the maps we received, this 1.14 acres basically fits right into the hundred-foot buffer off of 44?
It's within the hundred-foot. And that's why part of the comments that we received in the past from George was that it would require waivers. Because putting trees, landscaping there, putting benches, all this stuff will require waivers. However, given that it would be town property, the town won't, wouldn't need waivers.
I wonder just about how close, because, you know, so it fits right in the hundred-foot buffer and the parking lot appears to be at about fifty feet off of the road. I guess my concern being like if somebody decides to come and use the park and they pull in and their dog jumps out of the car and runs into the road or something like that, would there be any way to bring it down the slope a little bit more, to give it more of a buffer from the road?
Again, the part of the, you know, I think is part of Julie's comments is the more you try to pull it down, the more you're catching grades. It's a catch 22. And then it becomes also a problem with the current design of the, of the winery building. This area here, you know, part of the design of the winery building was to pull it as far back as possible to minimize the visual impact when you were driving. So, the more I pull it back, the less area we have for parking areas and so forth. So, the more I have to get into the stream. And even though this is an unregulated stream.
It's steep right there.
Dr. Clem has wanted a hundred-foot buffer at a minimum in here. So, it is one of those things is you're pushing and pulling. And the current design right now that we thought for that park was you would have essentially, it would be clean because the town would own it and they, other than access of the driveway, you wouldn't have any common elements between the two. The more we pull it down, the more we start integrating with each other, then you start having common elements to it and it becomes harder to draft all the documents and so forth.
It kind of seems like it should be integrated just because of the way, you know, your access easement will be through that piece of property and you guys will be plowing your own driveway and maintaining that and so forth. And so, if it was integrated and you guys took care of the landscaping, that would maybe just be less of a burden on the town and then you guys would be sure to keep it up to a high standard.
We had it integrated originally and a lot of the comments were, you know, for example, if we had the water tank underneath, which was the same thing that it was in the past, is, okay, who's responsible for that? What happens if there's repairs that you got to do and who's responsible for those repairs and that? And then you have a truck coming in and there's, it gets a lot more complicated. And that's why we will design it, when we design this, our idea always was that it wouldn't feel like two different facilities. So, from a look and feel, it would just feel the same. The property will be owned by the town. As you can see in here, we're actually, a lot of the landscaping that we would have to do to shield the winery restaurant would have to be done on the, on the public overlook in the future. So, one of the agreements we would need is an access agreement to plant those, those materials in the future and maintain it. We had no, we had no problem maintaining the landscaping plan that we had set forth in the past.
The plantings you forgot down at the bottom of Delveren Hill corner, the bottom of the corner? That's all, no, above that, right there, yeah. That's all new plantings?
That was the wine, the vines, that was in the original plant.
I want to get it back to the town board real quick too. I mean, this is for the town board, so. Steven?
Well, I'm listening to all of this and, you know, you're giving this to us, right? This is going to be donated to the town of Armenia. What I'm seeing here is I'm thinking, I, what I'm seeing is I'm seeing overanalyzation of something simple. They're giving us a nice, beautiful overlook, okay? They're bending over backwards for us to do something positive for the community. I don't think it's a good idea to be, to nitpick every little portion of it. You know, and I, I think, you know, it's great that we discuss the details of, you know, should it be open during, should it be open at night, should it be open during the winter? That's important, maintenance agreements and what have you. But, you know, from what I've just heard, you know, they're giving us something nice. They're giving us an overlook, something that's going to make people safe, which is a better alternative to what we have now, which is absolutely nothing. So, I think what we need to do is, I think as, as a town board and as a planning board, we need to be a little bit more willing to let it be what it is, which is a nice overlook where people can just, they're driving down the road, they see the sign, oh, yeah, we'll go there and just let it be what it is, which is a nice overlook to be able to see the view coming down Delveren Hill. No, no need to overcomplicate everything. Just be able to work out the details and go from there.
Well, the good news is it's up to the town board.
And as far as I'm concerned, we'll try to make it as simple as we can.
Very good.
Well, from my standpoint. I can't speak for anybody else.
What is the road surface that you're using for your main? If you want to repeat my question.
The entry road? For, you mean for, for this loop? We haven't designed it yet.
Okay, so. So, my question was referring to the fact that if you're doing it in mecanum or you're doing it in gravel, maybe they should be the same so that we don't scream one thing and do something else. So, that's one of our, one of my considerations is that perhaps for the simplicity and overall look, it would be the same.
Yeah, well, definitely, the, this has not been designed. I think the parking lot, one of the parking lots is required to be pervious surfaces. This, I think, was designed, I think, as paved, right, originally, paved? So, I think this loop here that you're seeing will be all paved, which part of it would be on the town's property and then this would be gravel. I think this one was designed originally to be gravel too. But we haven't designed that, you know, we have to do, when we go to approvals for this, we've got to do site plan approval on that in which we have to include a full landscaping design and architectural design and so forth.
One of the questions I had, I don't know, do you guys know what the handicap accessibility requirements are? And are you providing handicap spaces and do they have to be paved by themselves? Do they have to be a different material? And then does the walkway have to be of a solid surface to allow people with wheelchairs to get out to it? I just don't know the answer. I'm just kind of raising that as an issue.
I don't think we've looked into it, no. I think in there, it looks like there is a, there's a handicap spot, but I don't know if the whole thing complies with handicap.
I was discussing before, I know that.
I believe that's shown as pervious pavers for that.
For that?
Only that path so that handicaps are-
This and that, okay.
So, so they can pull up to a per, an impervious handicap parking space and then they can get out and then drive, go out onto a pervious or-
Same as on the onsite wherever our-
We did, we did discuss it at one time, I remember that.
Same as onsite, wherever there's handicap spaces, it's designed with impervious pavement.
Well, do you have any computer by any chance, the landscaping plan that we did for the original submission?
Did I get it aligned?
Oh, okay.
I have a question, Dave, that you might be able to answer that's related to this. Because we were talking about what looks like it belongs to the town and what looks like it belongs to the restaurant or the silo. Is there a difference in liability based on signage? I mean, when you have citizens or non-citizens, tourists who are using town property that's adjacent to property that's private, should they be able to know what belongs to whom?
As far as the property lines are concerned?
Yeah, and also how things look, because if we want things to be consistent in design, that can also confuse people into thinking this is all one thing. This is all Silo's property or this is all the town's property and they might behave differently. There might be different liability.
Well, it probably makes sense to have some simple signage there to indicate that, you know, this is a town park and this parking lot is for a town park. And I would think that, you know, Silo would probably want some signage up there to direct people, you know, who are coming to the winery restaurants, they don't pull into the parking lot for the park and go, geez, I missed it and turn around. So, I mean, I think on a basic level, I think some very simple signage would make sense.
That part has to be figured out as far as designing those, for sure. The other thing to keep in mind too is there's nothing says that after the park's been dedicated, maybe some things are much easier for the town to get accomplished after the fact, instead of having Silo do it and go through the process they have to go through versus what the town would have to go through. Could be two different standards. So, some of the things you're talking about, for example, Vicki, with landscaping or even paving.
Park plan details, which says the details must be worked out and agreed to by the town board, planning board and Silo incorporating into a park plan. So, it, it would be who of us?
So, point number one given to us by David Everett says park plan details. The site plan details for the park must be worked out and agreed to by the town board, planning board and Silo and incorporated into a park plan. So, it seems to us that at this point, we should design it the way we intend to do it. Now, whether or not you can do the interpretive sign later, it should be in the plan. It should be designed upfront, knowing that that's what we're going to do and whatever waivers we need to get them.
Well, we're going to commit to, you can put your own plans in and then you require the-
Exactly, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
So, as long as we're on the same page.
In my recollection of the landscaping plan that was previously submitted- In my recollection of the landscaping plan that was previously submitted was I- I thought George James and maybe Michael Clemens had some concerns about some of the plants that might grow tall and block views.
We're not doing that.
And so that- that's what- that came out and, uh...
We gotta get our shortest person, nothing higher than our shortest person.
Right. But, yeah, I think that the park plan for this is relatively simple. I mean, this is a relatively simple park and, you know, Steven was saying this should be simple and, right.
Pedro, are the designs for the restaurant, um, are they set or is that something you're still...
No, we- we haven't even started them.
Okay.
Essentially, we- the designs right now that we have are just the- the designs that were in the MDP. Neither that nor the vineyard cottages.
Okay.
You know, on the- on the surface, one of the options that you have, and I don't know, maybe- maybe you already discussed it, was, um, you know, it could be a gravel parking lot for now, but then when the winery is built and Silo decides that they want to pave, you know, their parking lot, and maybe at that point, when they've got equipment on site, they just pave the rest of the parking lot for the park. And maybe- maybe that's a simple thing. I don't know whether that's an option too, but you can- you could do it in that staged way and that could be a condition of the dedication.
Well, Dave, you mentioned, what Vicki was talking about before, that the planning board needs to agree, that the town board needs to agree. I mean, is that the process or is the process more so that the town board needs to come up with what they deem appropriate and...
Well, I view it as a collaborative effort, you know, because this plan is gonna get incorporated into, um, you know, the overall site plan for Fyllo Ridge. But, I mean, you know, in the end, the town is- board is the one that's gotta accept dedication of this.
Right.
So they're the ones that really need to be comfortable with the elements of the park and that they like it. Um, so they could say, you know, we're gonna accept dedication of it. And I think the planning board is here to maybe provide some input and help the town board in that process, if that's the way you want to look at it.
There's a lot of good ways to do it, a lot of different ways to do it.
Well, I think that was the input that the town board was looking from the planning board, because you guys have the experience in, you know, laying these things out and doing all this sort of stuff.
So what is the benefit to giving this to the town, then? Wouldn't it almost in some ways be a little easier to get a waiver for your driveway and to do, and for the park from the town? Um, and then it would just sort of make the maintenance and all of that a little bit more...
The, um, I think this was- this, the park has been something that's been always sought by residents in Armenia for a long time. Uh, it was actually a condition of site plan approval. Um, we did actually get a waiver for that driveway already. As part of our special use permit, we got a condition for that driveway, driveway, including the driveway to the, uh, to the, um, vineyard cottages. And there's, um, there's, I think, four or five conditions that are set forth in there. Um, for us, you know, the problem of, on us owning the park in its entirety, um, it is a liability issue. Uh, we're much more likely to get sued by someone than the town would, um, and...
People will be coming to the restaurant anyway, you know, and if they...
But I- I have li- I have liability or insurance for the- for the- for the restaurant and stuff like that. But when it comes to the park, it's something that we're not maintaining. Someone could, you know, kids could go in there and start drinking at night and then drive out if something happens. Then it is a liability versus, uh, being the town park is different. Also, the town having their own park, they can, essentially the town can control their- their destiny moving forward. I think as, um, uh, Norm was saying, the town decides in the future to do additional improvements to the park, they can do so. If we own it, then it becomes also, uh, a lot harder. So for us, uh, it was much easier for us, much easier, much cleaner for us to give the- the town a park that they own, that they can operate. Um, I do agree that the design of the park should be agreed upon by the town board and the planning board. And we can build that and we can agree to maintain it, you know, with- with certain standards.
Any other town board members have questions or... I just wanted to note that also the town already owns and operates numerous parks and has the expertise and the insurance behind it to do it, rather than us having to grab that part of it.
That's great. I'm glad that, you know, it's to have a safe place for people to pull over. I stop there a lot, you know, in that little shoulder. And it's not safe like it is now, so it's definitely, um, a great thing. Just want to make sure it's simple, you know, and the- the most practical thing to do.
I agree.
Another question, Vicki, anything else or...
No, I don't think so. Does anyone else from the town board have a comment? No? Hey, um, we have to, uh, get together as a town board to, um, discuss the plan details. And, um, so just, uh, hammer out what we, um, what we really want for this park. Um, we're delighted that, um, it's being offered to the town. Um, I think having a scenic overlook with our beautiful Delverne Hill is a wonderful thing. But, uh, we'll be at our regular meetings. We will be just discussing this. It'll be on our agenda so that we can come to some deci- to some decisions.
Yeah, I would say have somebody determine it and reach out to Silo and, you know, whatever you folks come up with, discuss on a regular basis with him to get some kind of decisions made versus, you know, waiting too long between meetings, you know, just to keep it moving along, what's possible.
Yeah, again, I- I think I would recommend for the town board members to look at, uh, the landscaping plan that was prepared in the original submission. Uh, we would, uh, what we'll do is we'll send out the- the actual, you know, the- the number so you guys can, uh, you know, you can find it under the Silo Ridge Secret Site. And then, you know, then you can give us direction from there. And you want to remove certain trees, you want to add different trees or, uh, we'll be happy to look into that.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? No? Need a motion? I need to make a motion.
Wait a second. Don't make a motion, just approve the minutes first.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Right ahead. What do you got?
It was on the agenda. It was the twelve-four and the twelve-eighteen, the one that's soon after done. And there was email to everybody on the twenty-ninth of December, so they should attend to you. That's all I have.
Are you on motion for this or that?
I'll make that motion to approve the minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now go right ahead.
Yeah, I'll first, yeah, I'll...
No, I'll just give these out on your way out, please.
Call for me?
I'll make the motion, yeah? Okay.
Seconds.
All in favor?